Um, there was someone else. I was in that government building.
So we got Darrell.
Of course, he was on the board when I was in James City, but I knew him. I went undergrad.
How you doing?
Oh, wow. And you, I didn't take any classes, but.
Got a minute, a minute.
I don't know. Well.
I guess it's on.
Hi, girl. Oh, you fine.
Hey, Yody. Yody. When I nod at you, when it's time for me to present.
Sure. Okay, good evening. Good evening, Board members, citizens that are assembled and others. We're going to call our meeting. At this hour, we will have our moment of prayer. So Mr. Deacon Darrell Rollins will be doing our prayer for us this evening.
Yeah, Mr. Rollins, you can go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Let us pray. Father God, I thank you, oh Lord, for this day, for this here is a day of Thanksgiving. Lord God, I'm crying out to you tonight, God, for your peace, because we need you now, oh God, more than ever before. We thank you for your angels of protection, oh God, who were dispatched to bless us over the dangerous highways, amen, protecting us from the dangers seen and unseen. And we're trusting that they will guide us as we leave this place, oh God, but never from you. Lord God, bless our board members and our administrative team tonight, and all who are under the sound of my voice. As we gather tonight, oh God, allow this team, this leadership team, oh God, to lead effectively, God, and govern effectively with boldness and with purpose while being led by your Spirit. Bless those here in attendance and all the citizens of this great community. And, oh God, for those who choose to come in tonight, let them be reminded that united we stand and divided we fall. Oh God, too often we see the consequences of disruption and division. So right now, oh God, I bind any divisive rhetoric. Give us a single purpose and instilling us a conviction to move this community forward. I'm asking right now, oh God, that no one comes tonight seeking his own success if it means failure for the community, but instead strive to contribute to the advancement of this great county. So bless us now, oh God, and we shall be blessed. Keep us and we shall be kept. And for that, oh God, your name shall be praised. For us in Jesus Christ's name we pray. Thank God. Amen.
Amen.
Let's stand. We'll call the meeting to order and have a moment, well, moment of silence first, if you would mind. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board members, if I could have a motion to adopt our agenda for tonight?
Madam Chair, I move that we would adopt the presented agenda for our meeting for tonight.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and second. All those in favor, let it be known by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Do I have any nays?
You do. Nay.
We have one nay. Let that be noted, please, in the minutes. Thank you. All right, moving forward. Next, Mrs. Rollins, we have our consent items. Would you go over the consent items for our consideration this evening, please?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair, Mrs. Little, Vice Chairman, Mr. Howell, members of the Board of Supervisors, and those who are assembled this evening. There are a lot of consent items tonight for your consideration. We have our approval of the draft minutes for March the 3rd, 2022. Approval of counts payable for February 2022 in the amount of $545,110.26. You have a resolution to commend Cypress Baptist Church in their 156th church anniversary. You have a resolution for National Travel and Tourism Week. A proclamation for Economic Development Week. A memorandum of understanding between the Peanut Soil and Water Conservation District in Surrey County. You have a resolution, amendment to the Board of Zoning Appeals. A request for a public hearing for Lab Lally Solar LLC. And for clarification, that is to be scheduled for June the 2nd, 2022. You have an appointment to the Blackwater Regional Library, Mrs. Deborah Dawson. And finally, there's a resolution for Surrey County Cleanup Month, April 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. Board members, are there any consent items that you need to have pulled?
Madam Chair, I'd like to just make a brief comment after we vote on item number eight.
Okay, all right. Anyone else? Hearing none, could I have a motion to adopt the consent items with the exception, well, that Mr.? To adopt them. And Mr. Drury has a comment afterwards. Thank you. So a motion to adopt.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the consent items as just delivered.
Okay, I'll second.
Second.
It's been moved and second. All in favor, let it be known by the regular sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Hearing none, adopted. Mr. Drury?
Just want to make a, just a brief comment, just for the board to note, and if we need to discuss in more detail at some future workshop or something, we can. But in this consent item, number eight, is a request for public hearing of Lab Lally Solar LLC for June the 5th, I believe it's when it is.
Second.
Second, next board meeting, I mean, excuse me, the June board meeting, anyway. Which is a proper thing for the board to do. We set the public hearings, and tonight I note that there was two public hearings removed from the agenda without board approval. The applicant had asked for it, it deferred, and he requested the board to consider the deferral. And Ms. Powell, maybe at some point in time later in the meeting, you can weigh in on that, are the proper methods for that. I do want to see the board to continue, not the non-public hearing items, but the public hearing items should be under control of the board. And thank you.
Thank you. All right, new business. We'll move on now to new business.
We need to make a, I'll make a motion for that to be approved. I had pulled the item, and now I'm going to make a motion for this approval after my comments.
Okay, you pulled the item.
Madam Chair, I asked at the beginning of the consent items to pull number eight, and it was not in the original motion, so I was trying to clean it up.
I approved all consent items.
I think, I think.
I did, too.
I think, I think what happened was, I think, I think we heard that you had a comment about number eight after the consent items was approved.
Okay, well, my, my, what my, what I said was to pull it, and we'll get a clarification on that, too. But when a board member says to pull something, that means to pull it and not vote on it at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Drury. We will move forward with the new business, Ms. Rollins. We have two new items for new business, and Ms. Rollins will do her staff report for those two items. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Little. There are two items for the board's consideration tonight on the new business. And the first item will be presented by Mr. David Harrison, the Deputy County Administrator. It is a memorandum of understanding between the town of Clermont and Surrey County. Mr. Harrison?
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. Good evening, Chairwoman Little. Board members assembled, everyone assembled tonight. The town of Clermont respectfully requests the Surrey County Board of Supervisors to approve a memorandum of understanding between the town of Clermont and Surrey County for Chesapeake Bay Preservation Site Plan Review. The Department of Environmental Quality is requiring the town of Clermont to establish a process to review and enforce Chesapeake Bay Preservation Regulations, to include employing staff or contractors or the establishment of a memorandum of understanding between the town of Clermont and the county of Surrey for proper Chesbys regulation. County Council has provided a draft MOU to be presented to the town of Clermont for consideration. And we are suggesting tonight that we, that you all authorize staff and council to present the enclosed draft MOU for Chesapeake Bay Preservation Site Plan Review to the town of Clermont for consideration or acceptance.
And, oh, you've heard the memorandum. Ms. Rollins, did you?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I've had an opportunity to view the MOU that is prepared for the town of Clermont for their review. And at this time, if there be no objection to other board members, I make a motion that we would approve this item on our agenda for tonight, to authorize the county staff to present this MOU in regards to Chesbys to the town of Clermont.
Thank you. Mr. Elliott, do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and second. All in favor, let it be known by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Hearing none? Motion carried. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Chair, the next item on the new business is the Surrey County Business Recovery and Reinvention Grant Program. Pleased to bring forth Mr. Yody Jobbery, Economic Development Director, who will give us information on this proposed program to benefit Surrey businesses. Thank you, Mr. Jobbery.
Thank you, Mr. Jobbery.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members, Ms. Rollins and others assembled. Tonight, I'm given the Economic Development Department's recommendation for the use of the American Rescue Plan Act funds and asks the board to approve the Small Business Recovery and Reinvention Grant Program. Economic Development recommends funding a business recovery and reinvention grant program to help enable companies to make changes to their business models, adapt to new technologies or practices, and otherwise reinvent their business to cope with economic and public impacts from the pandemic. Staff recommends the Board of Supervisors to authorize the budget appropriation and transfer of $50,000 of the American Rescue Plan Act funding to the Economic Development Authority of Surrey County for the purpose of administrating the Surrey County Business Recovery and Reinvention Grant Program. This program provides a one-time emergency grant to eligible small businesses in Surrey County to assist with unplanned costs incurred as a direct result of their business disruptions of COVID-19. There is a limited amount of funds available for the program, and therefore eligible businesses will be selected by the EDA until the total amount of funds are distributed. This program has been discussed with our EDA and has their support. And the start of the program is still undetermined at this time. I'm hoping that we can start the grant program, if the board wishes, by May or June of this year. So if there are any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Board members, you've heard the report coming from Mr. Jobbery. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair, just one.
Well, go ahead. I yield to you, Mr. Drury.
Just, just one comment. I'm not going to participate in this on voting or comments, because my wife and I both own small businesses in Surrey.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Drury, I see in the agreement that a total sum of $50,000 has been requested to be moved to support this endeavor. My question is, has a criterion or guideline of application of how to apply for the program been set up? Or the grant awards been set up? Is there a minimum or maximum? And can you give us some more details as to how these funds will be distributed by the EDA?
Yes.
If you have them?
Yes, yes, sir. In your packet, there is the application. And there's also, you know, grant guidelines and factors for this. You know, small businesses would have to be 25 employees or less. Businesses would have to be in good standing with the county. Must demonstrate a sustainability plan for maintaining the business in Surrey County. You know, currently open and operating. Business must have been established and operational within Surrey County for the past 12 months. Business has made efforts to retain their employees. Possession of a current Surrey County or town of Surrey Clermont and Dendron Business License. We're including the businesses within the towns as well. And, you know, you have to have a submission of a timely and completed application and must demonstrate how grant funds will be used. And qualified small businesses will be awarded up to $5,000.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, we would need a motion to approve of the Business and Recovery Reinvention Grant Program as defined by Mr. Jobbery.
Madam Chair, so moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second. All in favor, let it be known by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Nays?
I hope Mr. Drury and his wife applies.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, good evening. I just wanted to point out that the, I think, part of the request from Mr. Jobbery was also that the board appropriate $50,000 to the EDA, and the motion was just to approve the actual MOU itself. So I think there should be a separate motion approving the $50,000 transfer to the EDA.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we would approve the amount of $50,000 to the EDA for this project.
We need a second?
Second.
It's been moved and second. All in favor, let it be known by the regular sign of aye.
Aye.
Nays? Hearing none, ayes have it. Mr. Jobbery, move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Powell. And also for the Board of Supervisors clarification as well, is the request for that $50,000 and the funding source of that is to be used for the ARPA funding?
ARPA funding, I got you.
Okay, just one second. Okay, thank you so much.
Unfinished business.
Unfinished business, mhm.
Okay, all right. Due to the unfinished business, we had the public hearing request for a line scheduled, and we changed that schedule due to the need for them to continue working on their project. And so they were not ready to do and have the public hearing at this time. So we are scheduling that for June the 2nd of 2022. The reason for that, our planning department director may be out in the month of May for that meeting, and he would need to be here to direct that public hearing. Mr. Wade, we're thinking about you, okay? So we need to set a new date for their line Renewable Energy Public Hearing. And at this time, the floor is open to board members, if you have any questions, comments over.
Madam Chair, I didn't.
Otherwise a motion?
Didn't understand. Are we doing this in May or June?
We're doing it in June.
And, Madam Chair, this goes back to, to what I was trying to say in the consent item. The, so you are asking for a motion from the board to continue it, correct?
Well, we are asking for a motion to hold a public hearing for a line, RNG, for the June second meeting.
Understand. And clarification, for it to be changed, the board should have a, should approve or disapprove, not staff, if this is canceled in June, correct? I'm just making a point that the board should control where setting when the public hearings are held. This time, the board did not have any input into basically make a motion to deny it tonight. And, and I think a letter came in from a line, I've got it sitting in front of me, April 5th, which was Tuesday. The agenda over the weekend said that it would be held. And it's not a good way to do business. And that letter states respectfully request that the Board of Supervisors continue this request. It was taken off before the board made a motion. And that's all I'm going to say, but I just want to make it pointed. We need to do things correctly. And that means the Board of Supervisors should, these items should stay on the agenda. And then the applicant makes the request at the meeting, and we get to make a motion of whether it's continued or not. And I've talked to Mr. Hefty about that today. He said the staff put it on the, I think, the, the video out here and made it very public that it was canceled, so we couldn't do it properly. And again, I'm not trying to be so pointed with this. I just want us to do things correctly in Surrey.
Okay, note taken. Board members, that will be in our minutes, your notes. Thank you. Any other comments or about a line's new public hearing date?
Ms. Little, if this requires a vote, I'm sorry, I won't, I'm not able to vote on this. I need to abstain from voting.
Oh, okay, all right. So at this time, if there are no other comments, we will move forward with the scheduled date of June 2nd, 2022, unless something else comes up and we have to take it off again. Perhaps they may not still be ready or however, but we will follow. If, if we didn't follow the proper procedure, we will investigate that a little more and do justly. So could I have a motion to set the public hearing for a line for June 2nd at our meeting, regular meeting night in June, please?
Madam Chair, so moved.
It's been moved. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and second. All in favor, let it be known by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Nay?
No.
Okay, we have one nay. Please be noted for the minutes. The motion is carried, and the public hearing for a line will be June 2nd of 2022. Thank you. At this time, we have appointments. We have one for the Virginia Gateway Region Board of Directors, which Mr. Ernest Blunt, Mr. Blunt has been serving as a director there for the county for about 20 years, maybe 15 or less. But anyway, and then Ms. Rollins has an appointment. And I guess we should do these separately, Ms. Rollins?
Yes.
Okay, so, I need a motion to appoint, or if you have any questions about Mr. Blunt. He and I went to the meeting this morning, which is held, was held 8 o'clock this morning at the Public Library in Petersburg. And we all get different updates from the Gateway, and I try to pass them on to you as I receive them. The Gateway is in good financial condition, and they're working with the colleges and including them now in their programs and services.
Madam Chair, has Mr. Blunt agreed to continue in this role?
He has.
Madam Chair, I move that we would reappoint Mr. Ernest Blunt to the Virginia Gateway Regional Board of Directors to represent the county of Surrey.
Do I have a second?
A second.
It's been moved and second. All in favor, let it be known by the sign of aye.
Madam Chair, I have a comment. We're going to have discussion. Just, I just want to make a comment that the Dendron District citizens, Mr. Blunt's been on there for 20-plus years, as you say. And they consistently ask me if other people would have the opportunity to, to be appointed in these positions, and no one really knew about this, so I'm just bringing up what the citizens are saying, and they're telling me. So I'm going to vote no, no, nothing against Mr. Blunt itself.
I understand.
But I really do think we ought to give opportunities for other citizens out here that want to be involved to participate.
I agree. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, that can, in response to that, there is a citizen's form that was developed some time ago that I believe has been placed on our website. We can go back and check. But if citizens can go onto our website, and if it's not there, I make sure that it gets there, that are interested in signing up for any Board and Commission appointment, please fill out that form. And that way, the board will know those citizens who are interested. We'll go back and make sure that form, but I just wanted to kind of share that while we were talking about it, so that we will have a list of citizens who would be interested in all appointments for boards and commissions.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. Okay.
All righty.
The vote, was the vote current? I think, Mr.?
No, it had the motion on the floor.
Okay, the motion is on the floor. All those in favor, let it be known by the sign of aye. Aye. And the nays?
Nay.
Okay, and one nay, Mr. Drury.
Madam Chair, the next appointment was for the Board of Historic and Architectural Review. You do have that information in, in front of you, but I was asking the board members whether or not they had any appointment for that tonight. We do have some members who are currently serving on that. Let me pull that up. Yes, so the Board of Historic and Architectural Review, it consists of five citizens. At least four who should be residents of Surrey County, and there are certain characteristics in which the board members who serve are supposed to have. One member should be a licensed architect, one should be a realtor, one should be a member of the County Planning Commission, and one should be a citizen who has demonstrated outstanding interest and knowledge of historical or architectural development or building construction within Surrey County. You do have also in front of you the members who currently serve, and those members are... See the new numbers. There we go. You have Catherine Walls, whose appointment had expired, but has agreed to be reappointed. You have one vacancy. Even though these appointments are not district-related, she did serve in the Surrey District, but Mr. Calhouna indicated she was willing to serve. You have Mr. Kevin Spain, who currently serves. His appointment does not expire until the end of September 23. You have your Planning Commission member, Mr. Howard Gofford Jr., who serves on the board, and his appointment does not end until June of this year. And then you have Mr. Roger Clayton Jr., which, from what I understand, has also agreed to be reappointed. So the action for this evening is to reappoint Mrs. Catherine Walls to serve, and also to reappoint Mr. Roger Clayton Jr. to serve. And then there is another vacancy that will have to be filled or appointed by any member of the board.
Okay, board members, you've heard the report. I don't know, I don't know if anybody is, or have a name tonight, but if you do, that you would like to appoint to the Board of Architectural Review. We would like to hear who that is now, if you have one. But if we don't, we can, of course, do this at the next meeting, appoint that person. But we can move forward, I think, and adopt the other members that were.
Madam Chair, was this to reappoint Ms. Catherine Walls and Roger Clayton Jr.?
Yes, and one additional member. Now, from what I understand from Mr. Wade's office, it is pertinent that we get someone to serve on this board, because from what I understand, there is a case that's pending, and the, we need to have five members appointed to this board. This information, I can tell you, board members, will share with you in early communication. And I was hoping on this evening, I'm sure Mr. Wade as well, if we can get another member to be appointed to this board.
Tonight, Mr. Wade? I don't know if we have a name or a person that...
Wonderful, okay. Wonderful. All right, so we got a quorum. He stated that at least we have a quorum. If we can get those other two, if the board can approve the motion to extend, to reappoint the two members that have expired, Mrs. Catherine Walls and Mr. Roger Clayton Jr., then we will have four members on the Board of Historic and Architectural Review.
Okay, so we're only appointing two tonight, Mr. Elliott, as stated, you stated.
Yes, yes, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I make, I move that we would reappoint Ms. Catherine Walls and Mr. Roger Clayton to the Board of Historic and Agriculture Review.
Madam, Madam Chair, Vice Chairman, members of the board, I apologize. If the board could hold off on making those appointments, at least as it relates to Mr. Clayton for the time being, I believe that he serves on the BZA or the Planning Commission, I'm not sure. So I just want to make sure that he's actually able to serve on this board as well. So the board can vote to reappoint Mrs. Walls, but I'm not sure about Mr. Clayton, so I'm going to do a double check.
He does not serve on the Planning Commission. Does he serve on, Mr. Wade? I'm sorry, what was that? Okay. Okay.
I thought one of the requirements was for one of the individuals to be on the Planning Commission.
Yes, and that's Mr. Howard Goffrey.
Madam Chair, in light of this information, I rescind my motion and make a motion that we would reappoint Ms. Catherine Walls to the Board of Historic and Agriculture Review.
Okay, we're waiting on Mr. Wade to see if Mr... Okay.
So are we, we're saying he cannot serve on both? Is that what you're saying, Ms. Powell, for clarification?
Yes, that's correct. As I read the state code, it says members of the BZA are not to hold any other public office in the locality except on the Planning Commission.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, you've heard the request for those three. Do I have a motion? Oh, it's already been motioned. Do I have a second? No, he, he restated.
I restated my motion for Ms. Catherine Walls. So moved.
Okay, it's moved in second. All in favor, let it be known by the sound of aye. Aye. Nays? Hear and none, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Ms. Catherine Walls, who has been reappointed to the Board of Historic and Architectural Review. Madam Chair, we do have public hearings scheduled, and there are two public hearings tonight. The first one is on the Chesapeake Preservation Ordinance Amendment, and we will have Mr. Horace Wade, Director of Planning and Community Development, to come and give the staff
Good evening, Chair Little.
Good evening.
Members of the board, Ms. Rollins, here before you tonight to talk to you briefly about the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance Amendments before you tonight. These ordinance amendments are before you as we're currently working on compliance with, with DEQ regarding the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Program. They've identified certain areas within our ordinance that are required to be changed regarding how we look at water quality impact assessments, how we deal with our resource protection areas, dealing with how we do agricultural assessments. I think earlier you all agreed to an MOU with the James Water Solar and Water Conservation District that is also part of our, our program as well. So all of these things are to get us in compliance towards DEQ.
Mr. Wade, I, I don't, I don't mean to stop you, but I think people in the room say they can't hear you speak.
Can't hear me.
So can you speak into the mic?
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Wade.
So these, can you hear me now?
That's better.
Okay, okay. So these ordinance amendments are required by, by the state requiring us to be in compliance with the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Program. We are nearing compliance, is one of the eight elements that we have to, to do to comply with our, with our, our consent with, with DEQ. We're, we're, we're almost there. We had it reviewed by our attorney, Ms. Daniel Powell, had it also reviewed again by our DEQ representative to review those ordinance amendments and check them twice to make sure that they were correct. And right now, we're just asking for, I mean, to approve those so that we can be in compliance with our, with our ordinance. If you all have any questions, I'm here to answer any of those that you might have.
Board members, questions? I have none, Mr. Wade. At this time, okay. We will open into the public for their comments. So if you would come forward, if you have any questions about the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance, please come, give your name and your district, and you have three minutes.
Mike Eggleston, Denderin, Blackwater District.
Spagelston.
Yeah, talking about Chesapeake Bay. Problem is, when you have a pouring rain like we had today, the big city, New Penne News, Richmond, Hopewell, open the floodgates and dump raw sewage in the river rather than overcome the sewage plant. So that's one of the main reasons the Chesapeake is so foul is the big cities dumping raw sewage. You ever wonder why that park next to James River Bridge is closed about three times a year? That's why. E. Coli from raw sewage. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, other citizens? Having no one come forth, we will close the public hearing to the public and comments from board members. Mr. Elliott?
No comments, Madam Chair.
Mr. Drury?
No.
I have no comments. Mr. Howell?
No comments at this time.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. If you're like me, you don't really understand all of the guidelines anyway from the DEQ on water quality, so. But anyway, we try to do our best, and Mr. Wade, thank you for taking care of it.
Any closing comments, Mr. Wade?
I have none.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, with that stated, there is a required action for the board on this item, and that is to approve the Chesapeake Preservation Ordinance Amendment as outlined by Mr. Wade, and there is a, a long motion for that, but the motion would be to approve the Chesapeake Preservation Ordinance Amendment as presented.
Okay, the motion has been made by...
No, we asking for a motion.
Okay, Ms. Elliott, would you make that motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the board would approve the Chesapeake Preservation Ordinance Amendment that it comes in compliance with the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act of the Surrey County Subdivision Ordinance. In order to comply with the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act and outline in 62.1-44-1568 of the Code of Virginia, the amendment includes changes in definition of type of plans and development that can occur in designated protection and management areas as well as other technical amendments. That will be my motion.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, let it be known by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Nay? Hear and none, motion adopted.
Madam Chair, there is a second public hearing, and that is on a request that comes from our school division. It is to amend the current fiscal year 2021-22 budget, and Dr. Sabrina Sims is here and staff, if you have any questions, but I will give the staff report. There is a code section, 15.2-2504, that states any amendment which exceeds 1% of the total expenditure shown in the adopted budget must be accomplished by a notice and a public hearing. So the amendment for the school division night does fall into that criteria, so we're asking for the public hearing. You did receive some information in your agenda material regarding a request from the school division to carry forward 2021 funds that are generally appropriated to the school division for capital projects. And also in your material, you do have the grants that the school division has received in the current fiscal year. They're asking for appropriation of those grants. And I am navigating it, so just one second, I will pull it up. And, let's see here. Just give me one second. I apologize. I do apologize. My, I'm trying to take notes. Unfortunately, Mrs. Pierce had to leave on emergency, so I'm just trying to navigate and, and take notes and follow the agenda, so just give me one second. Thank you for your patience. Okay, here we go. All right, so there is a request for an appropriation of unspent funds, and the amount of that appropriation amount for the grants is $2,122,332. That reflects the various grants that the school division has received that was awarded in fiscal year 2021-2022, and we do need to have those funds appropriate to the current year's budget. In addition, as I mentioned before, there are carryover funds that you all aware, when the auditor comes and presents that amount to the, to the board, the school division typically requests that those funds be carried over to the suing year's budget for capital projects. So we are asking tonight for those funds to be amended to the school year's budget for capital initiatives, and that amount is $432,341.20. Dr. Sims?
Yes, ma'am, Mrs. Rollins. I wanted to just correct a figure. That's $2,122,332.41.
Did I say 222,000?
That's you.
Thank you.
Two million.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we've heard any...
So, yeah, so we can open the floor for public comments.
Okay, this time, we will have public comments concerning the school's unspent funds of $2 million?
We have, Madam Chair, we have public comments for the staff report that was just presented, for the $2,122,000 rounded for the grant funds that the school division has received, in addition to the $432,341 in carryover funds from the prior year to be used for capital projects. So at this time, we're asking for the public to come and comment on the request of the school division.
Name, district, and three minutes. Thank you.
Ellen Eggleston, Blackwater District.
Mrs. Eggleston.
Uh, I don't know what, I'm not, I am unaware of the maintenance needs for the school system. I've not questioned anybody, nobody has told me, but with that amount of money, I would just like to make a small suggestion that air conditioning be put into the elementary school cafeteria. I am told that at the time, air conditioning was put into the elementary school, that for some reason, they did not put any air conditioning in the cafeteria area and where those workers worked during the summertime. It is brutally hot in there. So that's just a suggestion. I know there are probably lots more important needs in the school system to spend this money. Thank you.
Mike Eggleston, Denderin, Blackwater District. It would be nice if you enumerated the maintenance needs. I mean, just say maintenance needs. What maintenance needs? If you could post it on the website so the public knows what we're spending the $2 million on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I think it is enumerated here. Any other comments concerning the school's funds? All right, we will close the public hearing and comments from the board members. Starting with Mr. Howell.
Madam Chair, I have no comments at this time.
Okay, Mr. Calhoun.
If I can just try to understand something. So the, the school board has received $2.122 million in grants for the '21-'22 year? Is that correct? Is? Okay, thank you. Has any of that money been spent to date?
Good evening once again, everyone.
Good evening.
The $2.1-plus million came to the school division as a part of our ESER funding, and in those ESER grants, we had to designate how we would be using the money. So a large percentage of that, Mrs. Eggleston, has been set aside for HVAC work at the elementary middle as well as the high school. When you get into HVAC work, as well as the fact that we need to dig a new well by December of 2023, we are setting aside those funds to cover some of those big capital improvement projects that have been hanging over the school division's head for many years now. We know that we probably will not have another opportunity in the near future to receive those types of funds. So we are designating projects in the schools and around the school division that we know are needed. One of those projects, also in addition to the HVAC, the wells, is the refurbishing of the track at Surrey County High School. So there are funds that will directly benefit the day-to-day instruction, but there are also funds that will benefit the community. We know that the track is used by not just our students, certainly our citizens are there and they are using that track daily, and we want to encourage that. But if you're out there and you're using it, you can see the condition of that track and what needs to occur, and we are, as a school division, committed to making sure that we put those funds towards areas that not just benefit the schools, but the entire community.
Thank you. That answers the question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, board members? I have no questions.
Yes, Madam Chair, I believe Dr. Sims assisted in giving closing remarks in terms of the use of those funds, but again, as I was going to state it, that memo is included in the board of supervisors' agenda material, especially as pertains to the use of the monies for the HVAC grades, upgrades, and other items. There is a resolution that the board is going to be asked to approve tonight as pertains to this budget amendment, so you do have that resolution before you. So the request tonight is to approve resolution adopting a budget amendment for the fiscal year 2022 to the school operating fund and cafeteria fund budget in a total aggregate amount of $2,554,674. So that is the requested motion.
Okay.
Madam, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, I know I'm talking a lot tonight. In addition to what Ms. Rollins said, I think it would be appropriate if the resolution, I'm sorry, if the motion also said that you're amending the budget, but you're also appropriating those funds to the school board, as is already provided in the resolution.
So the first action would be to authorize the amendment, and then the second action, board members, would be to appropriate the funds as enumerated.
Motion to amend. Board members, motion to amend the school budget.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that we adopt the budget amendment for the fiscal year 2021 to the school's operating fund and cafeteria budget in a total amount of $2,554,674.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor? And we will do a roll call. Myself, aye. Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Mr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Drury?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion, second. We need a second. The motion is now carried. Okay.
And Madam Chair, the, another motion that we need is to authorize the appropriation of the funds to the school division.
Madam Chair, I move that we would appropriate the 2.554674... Madam Chair, I move that we would appropriate the two point five, five, four, six, seven, four, uh, amount to the school board from the, uh, general budget from the other county.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, let it be known by a sound of aye. And I guess this needs to be a roll call. Um, Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Mr. Drury?
Aye.
Mr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Howell?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion carried, and thank you, board members.
And for the record, the resolution is adopted. I like the way you said that number, Mr. Elliott. You, you read one digit by one digit.
We're dealing with big money here.
Okay. Madam Chair, the next item on the agenda is a presentation. This is budget time, and we do have a presentation from our school division. It is to present the proposed budget for 2022, that's 2023. And Dr. Sims and Mrs. Harvey, again, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening.
They're doing a great job, but Mr. Brown is on vacation.
Madame, most of them do vacation.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Tony.
No pressure to get that right.
Oh, first of all, good evening once again, Madam Chairman of the school board, Mrs. Little, to our board of supervisors members, Mrs. Rollins, county administrator, gathered administrators, and certainly citizens of Surrey County. It gives me pleasure tonight to bring to you the fiscal year 2022, 2022, 23, proposed budget for Surrey County Public Schools. Before we get into the budget, I would like to brag a little bit about Surrey County Public Schools as well as talk about the school division goals. So the school division goals are aligned with our school board goals, and there are five. The first goal is to make sure that we focus on high student achievement for all students, not just some. We emphasize the term "all" in Surrey County Public Schools. We want to continue to promote a positive school climate. We also pride ourselves on hiring and retaining highly qualified and effective employees. We also pride ourselves with sound fiscal stewardship as well as transparency. And finally, Surrey County Public School's school board members are committed to being educational leaders in the community. So with that being said, I do want to talk about some of the highlights from this past year so that the board is aware of how the funds that you have appropriated to us previously have been used for the good. First of all, all Surrey County Public Schools are fully accredited for the sixth consecutive year. Our SOL scores in reading, math, and science are within three percentage points of the state. And this is phenomenal, given the fact that this entire past year, we worked via a pandemic. In addition to that, our kindergarten students exceeded the state on the fall literacy benchmark by over five percentage points, eighty-seven percent compared to eighty-two percent in the state. Our kindergarten students rate the participation in pre-K programs also exceeded the state by over forty percentage points, so seventy-three in Surrey compared to thirty-three percent around the state. Surrey County High School on-time graduation rate exceeded the state. We are at ninety-five point seven, and the state is at ninety-three percent. Surrey County High School class of 2021 had zero dropouts. In addition to that, Luther Porter Jackson Middle School, once again, received the Twenty-First Century After-School Grant totaling over a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. Luther Porter Jackson Middle School was also recognized by U.S. News and World Report as a premier middle school. We provided Chromebooks to all students in grades one through twelve this past year. And that's an upgrade. We pushed those Chromebooks all the way down to first grade because we needed, uh, a computing device that actually had a jump drive. The students previously had iPads, but COVID-19 required us to do things differently. So we did purchase Chromebooks and provided them in grades one through twelve. And Surrey County Public Schools continue to employ hard-working and compassionate employees. So the next slide basically talks about how we got to where we are in the budgeting cycle. Of course, we began back on November the ninth, 2021, where we held a joint meeting between the two boards, and we laid out some concerns. We talked about some issues, and we put forth what we hope were reasonable solutions based on what we talked about as a group. The dates since then is just a chronology of what the school board has been required to do in order to develop the budget that we will present to you. And I'll briefly go over some of the highlights of the budget that's going to be presented to you by Mrs. Melissa Harvey. The overall operating budget will be sixteen point two million. That's an increase of three point nine nine percent over fiscal year 2022's budget. It will require a one point seven five increase in local funding. We have a projected enrollment of six hundred and sixteen students. And when I say projected, that is truly what the University of Virginia determines. It is significantly lower than our actual enrollment. Right now, we have, uh, over six hundred and seventy students. Uh, we are recommending a five percent salary increase as well as a step increase for all employees. It also shows a reduction in existing staffing costs by over one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. It reducing, sorry, it reduces staffing levels through voluntary attrition as well as retirement. In addition to that, it includes an additional fifty thousand dollars in funding for operation and maintenance associated with Hampton Row Service Department fees. So approximately fifty thousand dollars. It also absorbs the five point two percent increase in health insurance costs so that our employees can be held harmless. So with that being said, I will turn the microphone at this point over to my Director of Finance, Mrs. Melissa Harvey.
Good evening, Mrs. Little, members of the board, Ms. Rollins, and all assembled. The overall proposed budget for Surrey County Public Schools would total twenty million seven hundred and ninety-four thousand forty-two dollars. That number is a little distorted by that one hundred eighty-two percent increase in grant funding, and that's due to ESER. We addressed some of that earlier today. However, projects are, um, delayed here in Surrey County Public Schools, just like everywhere else. There are a lot of supplies floating on the other side of California that we just can't seem to get in yet. So you'll see a duplication of some of those as we get some of that in this year during fiscal year 22, prior to June, so that those projects can be started as you find contractors who have employees who are working. So we want to be in a position that we can take advantage of all of that. You notice an increase of six hundred twenty thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars or three point nine nine percent in the overall operating budget. A great deal of that support is coming from increased state support or state revenue. The state revenue is based on the December sixth, 2021, introduced budget by outgoing Governor Northam. The General Assembly has not passed a final budget yet for the state. So some of these numbers will be subject to change once a final state budget has been produced. Overall, local revenue to support this budget would need to be increased by two hundred twenty-one thousand three hundred sixteen dollars or one point seven five percent with three hundred ninety-nine thousand two hundred nine dollars or fourteen point two six percent from increased state support. Both federal revenue and other revenue, um, have remained stagnant. So it's an overall increase in the operating budget of three point nine nine percent. The only increases you'll see in this budget are personnel, where it deals with the increased cost of health insurance, as well as the governor-proposed five percent increase in salaries. Outside of that, the only other increase is to absorb the HRSD fee, which is a new fee for, um, Surrey County Public Schools. The operating budget expenditure-wise are categorized with sixty-seven point five three percent dedicated to instruction, seven point zero four percent in administration and health, seven point five four percent in pupil transportation services, thirteen point three four percent in operations and maintenance, and four point five six percent in technology services. Once again, you can see the overall increase of three point nine nine percent. The grants budget. The outgoing governor's proposed budget included a construction grant of one million sixty-seven thousand one hundred thirty-two dollars. As I indicated earlier, the General Assembly has not made a final action on that. The House and the Senate have varied, uh, various, um, opinions about that, as, as everything else is these days. And so we don't know if those funds will last, if they, if we will get those funds. The school construction grant is designed to help modernize public schools. We can certainly use that to accommodate some of the other, or, or take over some of the other things that we have on the capital improvement plan as we continue to partner with the county to get things done. So the overall grant budget would become four million seventy thousand six hundred twelve dollars or an increase of two million six hundred twenty-nine thousand two hundred thirty-six dollars or one hundred eighty-two point four one percent. School food services, and we are anticipating additional state revenue. Most Virginia school systems went to the community eligibility provision with feeding schools or feeding students. So no student is turned away from having a hot meal for lunch, and no students have to pay for their lunches. Um, studies have shown that there was, um, a need for increased state support because the cost of food has increased. And so we're anticipating an increase in state support to support the food services program. A summary of the expenditures for school food services. You'll see that the only increase we have here, once again, are personnel-related. So to recap, all of our, our funds for a school, for this, for the overall school operating budget would be twenty million seven hundred ninety-four thousand forty-two dollars or an increase of three million two hundred ninety-nine thousand one hundred thirty-seven dollars with two point six million of that coming from the grant sources. Our capital improvement plan, we still have fiscal year 21, 22 here, in addition to 22, 23. As you are aware, there are ongoing projects with, um, Luther Porter Jackson Middle School, taking care of the fire suppression system there. That is still ongoing. Um, we have been working diligently on getting that project done. Once again, there are supply chain issues in terms of when supplies are available, but that project is moving forward. The other grant, for the other funds for fiscal year 22, 23 are mostly grant-funded, with the exception of the carryover funds to assist with the well. Um, and also to assist with the requirement for the HVAC system. The HVAC grant was two hundred thousand dollars, and it required local support, a one hundred percent match of local support. We thank you for previously approving that so that we can proceed with our HVAC, um, projects. And Dr. Sims?
Thank you, Mrs. Harvey. Uh, I sat down, uh, this past week and thought of some anticipated questions. So I think I'll do my best to answer those and leave some room at the end. So first question, why is there a request for additional local funds when the student population is decreasing? Uh, and there are three separate answers. Uh, Surrey County has a composite index of point eight zero. Point eight zero basically is interpreted as the county or the locality is capable of providing eighty percent of the school division funds. The other twenty percent of the funds are typically provided to the school division from state revenues as well as federal revenues. So when we increase our amount, so proportionately, the larger amount would be from state funding. In addition to that, the budget does include a mandated five percent raise for employees. Five percent for this year as well as an additional five percent for next year. So full transparency. It is a full ten percent raise. We're breaking it up over two years. So next year will probably be more like five point, five point two five percent when we include benefits associated with it. As well as our last area, a continuation of required programs. Surrey County Public Schools is held to standards of quality. So the state tells us what programs we must have, what employees we must employ. And we have to adhere to that in order to keep our full accreditation. So it's reflected in this budget. In addition, there's another question. What is the school division doing to offset funding and declining enrollment? First of all, we are doing a reduction or realignment of staff via voluntary attrition or retirement. That staff that we are looking at with voluntary attrition and retirement are primarily non-instructional staff. Our instructional staff is mandated by the state. But where we can, uh, pull back on non-instructional staff, we have been doing that consistently. But where we can pull back on non-instructional staff, we have been doing that consistently for multiple years now. We've also reduced some program budgets. So for example, this year, Virtual Virginia, we were required by the state to offer a virtual option. That costs Surrey County Public Schools about eighty thousand dollars to pay for the tuition of approximately twenty-five students. That's not required for next year. So we are cutting back in as many areas program-wise as we can in order to meet this budget. Next slide, why are students' costs so high? For several reasons. One, we have in Surrey County a high percentage of low-income students. So approximately sixty percent of our students are free or reduced lunch. That means the schools are providing additional resources. We're providing additional services for those students so that they can compete with their peers. In addition to that, we have a higher percentage of special needs students. In Surrey County, at to date, we have about twenty percent of our students are special needs. They too have additional resources that we must put in place according to their individualized education plans to support those students. We have to build it into our budget. We also have high transportation costs, and this occurred prior to the gas prices going up. Surrey County Public Schools has one of the largest service areas for buses. We transport our students all on the same buses, but some of those buses are on the road for up to almost an hour and a half. That's a long time. That's a lot of wear and tear on the buses, and that's a lot of fuel. We have to build it into our budget. We also have an aging bus fleet. I do not want to mention the fact that this past Thursday, we had a bus burn in its entirety. Thankfully, the students and the staff and everyone were safe, but we have an aging fleet that we have been replacing bus by bus by bus. Some other factors, we have aging facilities. Our schools, when you go and look at them, they look great because we have a wonderful maintenance department, but we do still have aging facilities. And you'll see in our CIP budget, that's in your packet, what those concerns are. And maintenance, of course, goes with our facilities, with what needs to be done to keep them operable for our students as well as our staff members to be safe. And the last bullet I'd like to point out is, it says duplication of services because I looked up the word triplication, and there is no word for triplication. We have three schools, and we are having to repeat pretty much everything at each school. We have a separate department for custodians. We have, that has to serve one school. We have three separate cafeterias. That's triplication of services. But because of how we are situated, we cannot pull back on that. So when you look at our budget, this is what you're seeing when you see that increase from last year. Are there any questions for us at this time?
Thank you, Dr. Sims. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comments.
Yes, ma'am.
Just questions from the board.
What members, your time to ask questions.
If everybody's being bashful, I'll go.
Mr. Drury.
On page two, what y'all have in the documents, in fact, Mr. Elliott asked, we were mumbling here for a minute to interpret it. It says a five percent salary plus a step increase. Can you explain the step increase?
Yes, sir. This past year, we engaged with the private company Evergreen Solutions to do a salary and compensation study for Surrey County Public Schools. In that salary and compensation study, our first goal was to make sure that every employee was placed on the scale or placed on a step. And last year, I think that amount cost us about eighty thousand dollars in order to do that as well as to compensate some employees for being placed where they should be on the scale. With that in mind, so that we are not moving backwards, we are trying to maintain a step. So from last year to this year is one step higher on the scale than it would have been last year. So you'll see the five percent raise plus a one percent step or a one step. It's not a percentage, it's just this one step.
And I've asked you this before. In fact, through the six, six and a half years I've been on the board, teachers have consistently, every year during budget season, have contacted me with concern, and you know where I'm leading.
I do.
About frozen steps.
Yes.
People that have been there a long time ago, and y'all have heard it, and can leave and come back again at a higher step.
Yes, sir.
How does this go towards remedying that?
It does not completely address that. Our intent back when we met in November was to bring the full salary and compensation study that included steps for all employees to the board. However, we did not anticipate back in November when we met jointly that the governor would be requiring us to do a five percent raise. So this is a, current budget is a reflection of that five percent raise plus making sure that we are advancing employees one step.
If you step up an employee to correct it, though, can that be taken as the five percent?
No, sir.
No?
No, sir.
It's gotta be.
In order. Yes, sir. And for the sake of the public, of course, I think it goes back as far as two thousand eight when all Surrey County Public Schools employees were frozen on their step. That basically means from two thousand and eight up until even this year, our employees were, were not receiving those step increases. So that we do not track backwards. The school division in this budget is maintaining the step. It doesn't take into consideration all those years when employees were frozen. The intent was to bring that to the board, but the full amount in order to do that would be close to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we propose when we get to that point beyond the five percent raises that are mandated to do it over a two-year timeframe.
So, so the five eighty, in other words, a one step, in other words, can we do it in two years? Is what you're saying?
You can actually do it in one if you'd like to appropriate that much money to the school division.
In other words, but what you're saying is to, to do, to fully correct it, if, if the county increased your budget by another two hundred and some thousand dollars, you could do it?
No, sir. No, sir. Seven hundred and fifty thousand, we could do it.
I thought that was, I was taking that as the total. No. No. In other words, you, you got in this budget that says five hundred and eighty-two thousand for a five percent salary and step increase.
I'm going to let Mrs. Harvey address it.
Hello, thank you for the question. The five hundred and eighty thousand dollars that you see there is for the five percent pay increase along with the one step. If however, you wanted to address the salary and compensation study, that would be an additional seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I was taking it, you can understand.
Right, right.
A little of mine, I was like.
Yes, no. Right, that would be really good. The caveat to it was the kink that Dr. Sims mentioned is the five percent that was done, that was announced after our study, our salary study. So the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars would actually increase some because of the five percent salary.
I understand, that was my confusion.
Okay.
Big number.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Harvey.
May I make one more comment while I've got y'all here? And I'm going back in history, and I'm forgetting where it was, three or four years ago. Dr. Woden and myself had met about how to give more exposure to the high school. Y'all've got a nice school out there. We've got a nice school system in sports and so forth and so on. And if you don't have a child out there, seldom do you go past it. Seldom do you know when sporting events are held. And our resolution to try to come up with something was the sign at Hollywoodshire Route Thirty-One. I approached Landon over in Newport News that owned that by the name of Ron Perry, who also wanted to assist the school system. So I'm just telling staff, and I continue to bring it up. That sign was there to help y'all promote some of the items we saw here. So I'm just one board member, but I just wanted to tell everybody that was the intent. So, thanks.
Dr. Sims, the, the issue with the steps to put everybody on the proper steps, I heard you say that this, this could be done in two years?
Yes, sir. That is, the proposal is to do it over a two-year timeframe as opposed to doing it all at once.
Have that proposal been made to staff, to our staff?
No, sir, it's been made to the school board.
Thank you.
Well, then I have a follow-up question.
Yes, sir.
The seven hundred and fifty thousand, I know this is not exact accounting, but can I take that to say that if it was a two-step process that we could increase it, in other words, three fifty, three fifty?
Yes, sir.
Just making sure, since I had the other mixed up. Thank you.
And if, when and if it is increased three fifty by three fifty, the expectation is it's not a one-time addressing of that. That raises the floor so that every year we add from that point on, and we increase one step at a time on top of that.
I have continued questions. How hard is it going to be to continue to retain teachers if we don't do something? It's a concern.
Excellent question. I brag every day about the quality of teachers that we have in Surrey County Public Schools. They are phenomenal, and they take into consideration the student needs as well as the needs of the community on a daily basis, oftentimes putting them ahead of themselves. We have a great staff. I do believe that the five percent raise is probably minimum of what it's going to take to keep teachers with us, that five percent and that one step up. But I know that we are going to have to address this issue in the future in order to keep highly qualified teachers here in Surrey County.
Dr. Sims, what is your teacher turnover every year approximately?
Prior to COVID nineteen, and I'll start with that.
Please.
I'll start with prior to COVID nineteen. Prior to COVID nineteen, Surrey County Public Schools has done an excellent job of retaining employees. Once they are here, they realize that it's a family community that prides itself on putting the students first, and they do not have as many issues as they would have in larger school divisions. So they tend to come to us and want to stay with us. The selling point is always making sure that they come to us. If we can attract them and keep them for one year, they tend to stay. Unless it's something major to be closer to family or something of that nature, they tend to come and stay with us. So we do not have a high turnover rate. We lose our employees primarily to retirement, and that is after they have completed a full thirty years.
Another question, if I may, you mentioned that regarding their, their health benefits.
Yes, sir.
Are you requesting that, I, I guess, the county pays an additional portion of that? Don't we pay some of it now?
Yes, sir, we, we, you pay some of it now. According to the Affordable Care Act, we're required to pay eighty percent of the employee portion of the health insurance premiums. So we do pay that, and we'll continue to pay that. However, what Dr. Sims was trying to accomplish is to hold the employees harmless. We have had years where we had maybe a one percent pay raise, and the insurance went up six percent. So the employees ended up with a net deficit even though we gave them a raise. So what we're trying to do in lieu of gas prices inflation at fourteen percent, we're trying to take care of the increase in health insurance as well as truly giving them a pay increase.
And then my last question, and I think you know what I want to ask, with the decline of students in three schools, and you had up there, you had, I think you used the word triplication or whatever the word that you used, a way to reduce cost is possibly to combine two of the schools? No?
That's not. I didn't say it exactly as that.
Well, no, 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 I was asking the question about combining the school, you know, two schools and only having two instead of three.
And that on paper seems like a reasonable approach, but the problem with combining schools is having to retrofit old buildings. And by retrofit, it wouldn't matter which two schools we combined. If, for example, we shut down the elementary school and move those elementary students to the middle school, we would have to retrofit that entire middle school to accommodate elementary students. So for example, if you go into the elementary school, the stools are about this high. If you go into the middle school, they are full-size. And I would not recommend retrofitting. If you get to that point, it would be better to build than to retrofit old buildings that have infrastructure problems. And infrastructure problems can be everything from needing a new roof to making sure that there's no asbestos in the buildings, to making sure that the electrical system can handle the needed technology that needs to go into buildings. There are just so many areas that you would have to address that my recommendation would be not to try to combine, but to build a facility that will accommodate our seven hundred students in a manner where the students will have everything that they need in order to be successful and to compete with others.
I understand what you're saying, but if you look at the long-term expenditures of three schools, retrofitting would be a one-time large cost versus running three schools over the remaining years of life. I think, has anybody even studied that, that feature and maybe should address the cost savings? Or is there a benefit analysis of doing that?
Yes, ma'am. I thought you were gonna say.
Well, I, I will speak on that. So, and I, I'm not sure if you were on the board, Mr. Calhoun, but there had been some conversation when, in the previous administration where there was some conversation regarding using one of the school facilities for a recreational facility, and there was a study that was done by a consultant to look at that. So we can certainly revisit that. I know during the previous work session with the school division, there was conversation regarding, critical conversation in terms of how do we address the aging infrastructure in the three schools and whether or not we needed to do something based on the decline in population. I actually had this in my administrator's report, but I think the timing is right to say that just recently, on yesterday, I attended a meeting with the Hampton Roads CAOs and those, their county administrators in the Hampton Roads Division. That is not a Surrey County problem, I have to say, that the conversation that we talked about yesterday, declining enrollment is all over the state. And other divisions like Surrey County, regardless of size, are facing some of these same critical issues as to how we have to make sure that we look at an infrastructure. But again, it's declining enrollment. So I know that Mrs. Little, the chair, and other board members have brought it up before, and I would recommend at some point that we do sit down with the school division and the board to, to hash this out in a different type of setting so that we can talk about what you're asking for, Mr. Calhoun and other board members, to just have that open, honest conversation as to what Surrey County needs to do in the future to make sure that we are meeting the needs of the students, meeting the needs of the county, at the same time, not, you know, putting a lot of money in the infrastructure where we feel it could be used, you know, in a, in a different capacity by having different facilities, so.
Absolutely.
I, I brought that up in November's meeting at the school, and here it is March, and, or April, excuse me. And I would like for someone to table that, to have this meeting. The longer we wait, the more money we're spending doing triplicate jobs at three schools.
Absolutely.
And I, declining population and, and the cost of the school system. We need a school system, please understand, I'm. I'm not taking anything away from that, but I would like to have that dialogue.
Yes, sir.
Board members, the study that was done that the county did back when we were thinking about closing the elementary school and making that a, probably a park and rec-type of facility. I haven't looked at that report since then. So maybe we can revisit that report to see if there are things there that we can do. And like you said, if you don't do the study to find out exactly what are we paying now, and how much we could save, yeah, we know it would be hard. But we got three schools aging. Even if we build, say, we decide we're going to build a new school, and we're just talking now, wherever we're going to put it, which one are we going to knock down and replace it? But the new one, I'm thinking, you know. We got a complex there, but there are three buildings plus the other sports and all of that. So the study is going to be quite large, I think, for that project. I do know, I think the county has a little bit more land in that area, but I don't know if that is a process that we could work through. I don't know. How we're going to house the kids, and we're destroying schools, because we still have to have a building. So it's definitely will be quite a plan that has to be developed.
That is true, yes, ma'am.
Thank you all. And the board, I think, is willing, I know, is willing to work with that project.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, it sounds like there's a recommendation to get with the school division. For the county, there's other stakeholders we can engage in the process, the community. We got the planning commission and others to engage stakeholders, and just have a critical conversation regarding schools. And we'll make sure, Mr. Calhoun, that we work to schedule that meeting. Okay? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was sitting overlooking my notes. We discussed the declining, or the teachers. You addressed the issue prior to COVID?
I'm sorry.
You addressed the issue prior to COVID about how the teacher population, you know, we're losing them through retirement? How about since COVID?
Since COVID, our numbers have remained steady. And the employees, it's still the same. Those who have gone out have gone out primarily because of retirement. Or, I think we had two lead teaching completely, but that's not uncommon. That's almost average for every year.
It's not a huge amount of turnover. As you said, your family. And I, and as you know, my wife was a school teacher there for many, many years. And I understand what you're saying. I was thinking that if, is it increasing, and you're having to refill those positions, and it's making it difficult? I would just ask, I wanted you to do the full circle of the.
It will be difficult if we had to do that. But I can say, because of the size of Surrey County Public Schools, that has been an attraction for our teachers staying with us, because we have the room to social distance. We have fewer students in those classrooms during COVID, and that has been a plus for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair, are we ready to proceed?
Thank you, Dr. Sims. Thank you, Mrs. Harvey.
Thank you.
And of course, the school system's budget will be incorporated into the county administrator's proposed budget when it comes before the board. Okay, next on your agenda, you have reports, and this is for your information. You do have from the Commissioner of Revenue, two thousand and twenty-two Business License Report. And you do have the Treasurer of Surrey County, Ms. Oneek Ruffin, her investment letter. And that is for the board's information tonight. And unless the board desires, we will suspend the reading of the investment letter.
Board members, would you like to have the investment letter? Anybody to say yes, or? Not hearing anyone, so I guess we don't need to have that done.
All right, and we're moving right along to county administrators. We're not. Okay, we're moving right along to county administrators' report. And just a few housekeeping items. Mr. Jury, I do recall that you're talking about making sure that the county work with the schools to utilize the signs at the end of Hollybush Road. And that is something that we can definitely get into and highlight that. I do remember that. I do want to say the job fair. We did use the boards to advertise the public schools' teacher job fair. So that was one of the things that we did. Another housekeeping item, I want to go back and share with the board that one of the things that we tried to do on the agenda was to make sure that we put all of the actions that the board needs to take on all the items. So I just want to remind the board that if we look at the specific agenda material, there is the recommended action of each item. So that way, Mrs. Powell has been giving us some assistance, and, but I just want to make sure that we know that the recommended action that the board needs, we tried to put that on each cover sheet, so we can make it easier for you all, board members, to know exactly what we're taking action on. So just want to do that as a housekeeping item. Okay, so the first item underneath county administrators' report, and this has been quiet, so we're going to try to get really excited on this one item. So the first item underneath the county administrators' report is the news that we received from Congressman Donald McKitchen's office. Surrey County's project request was approved, and there was a handout that was available to the citizens before you came in. And this is not pocket change, but we do see behind us the award or the check from the federal government that the county will be receiving for three-point-two million dollars for water system upgrades. And Mr. David Harrison, I know I probably did not ask you, but if you don't mind, just to give just a little blurb as to what that funding is going to be used for, sir.
Good evening, good evening again, everyone.
Good evening.
The funding received, or that we will receive from Congress, will, three-point-two million dollars will be used for or towards a water system upgrades or improvements at the school system, at the school complex. You heard Dr. Sims mention the need for the replacement of a well. And the assistant to the superintendent, Mr. Wooden, called to make us aware of that need. And we applied for some funding, some congressional funding, for system upgrades, water system upgrades at the school system. We'll also be able to use those funds to connect it to a public water source. So that's what the funds will be used for, three-point-two million dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison, for giving that overview. And I know that board members, Mr. Elliott and Mrs. Little, was able to be here on this past Saturday, to be here with the congressman, his staff. And we had Mr. Wooden from the school division, and Mr. Yody from Economic Development was here. And it was a very good occasion for Surrey County, because when something like this, we all win, the community wins. So at this particular time, again, I want to thank all the board members for your support. And also to Mr. Harrison, deputy county administrator, and Mr. Jobbery, who did work very diligently. This is something that I can say, when a rural community receives this type of funding, it just speaks volumes to the efforts that we have staffed to put forth in these efforts. So we do want to, again, publicly thank them for getting in all the necessary materials for the county to be able to receive this funding from our federal government. Next on the agenda, we have another exciting item, and this is introduction of a new employee. So at this particular time, I will ask Ms. Nicole Carter to stand. And Ms. Nicole Carter is our new Director of Human Resources. And this is certainly a breath of fresh air to have Ms. Carter here. As you board members know, that we have been looking for a Director of Human Services, human Director of Human Resources for quite a while. Ms. Carter was formerly with the City of Richmond as the city's Human Resources Manager, responsible for overseeing employee relations, employment policies, process improvement, performance management, training and development, and employment law, just to name a few. She is certified in the field of human resources. She has a SHRM certification, and that is the Society of Human Resource Certified Professionals. She is certainly, again, a welcoming member of the Surrey County team. So at this particular time, if you can join me and welcome me, Ms. Nicole Carter to Surrey County. Now, Ms. Carter, you have a sign in your office that says, "Work hard and be nice to people," right? Okay. All righty, so if this, did you want to say anything, Ms. Carter?
Just want to say thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to working with you.
Okay, all righty. Thank you, Ms. Carter, okay. Don't forget that work hard and be nice to people. Also, I will go ahead and announce at this time, we have a promotion. So he is not here, but Mr. Antonio Rollins has been promoted to Maintenance Supervisor. He was formerly a maintenance technician with Surrey County. Mr. Rollins has credentials in HVAC, and he has been an asset to Surrey County for over nine years. So we do congratulate him on his promotion to that position. It's not an easy task, but we are confident that he will be meet the challenge. So we want to congratulate him on his promotion as well. At this particular time, we also have an update on the grocery store. And I'm going to ask Mr. Harrison to come forth and give us our update on the Surrey County Grocery Store project. Mr. Harrison?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening again. Chairwoman Little, members of the board, everyone assembled. Do have good news concerning our local market project. Surrey Marketplace has signed an agreement with United Natural Foods Incorporated, UNFI, which is a Providence, Rhode Island-based natural and organic food company. And the company was formerly known as Super Value. I think a lot of us know that name from a previous proposed project. UNFI is the largest publicly traded wholesale distributor of health and specialty foods in the United States and Canada. And the agreement that exists between the Surrey Marketplace and UNFI is for the design and management of the interior build-out of the Surrey Marketplace Local Market. The Surrey County Economic Development Authority has paid the retainer for UNFI's professional services from grant dollars provided from the Janine Foundation. UNFI Store Design and Equipment Division has completed the concept plan for the interior build-out, which you see on the screens above, which encompasses the following components: utility equipment schedule, mechanical plan, data plan, general scope notes. And just a few notes, that final review of the concept plan will be coordinated between UNFI's project manager, the project's general contractor, and the county's building official. And all final plans and drawings will be submitted to the building official for review and approval before construction commences. So the plan that we see above is the plan that has been worked out between Surrey Marketplace and UNFI, which will now be going to the county's building official and the project's project manager and contractor for review. And when a finalized, or definitely finalized, plan comes forth, a community meeting will be scheduled to explain the interior layout in the future project to the citizens of Surrey County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. The next item under county administrators' report is Surrey County Cleanup Month activities. We, I do know that the board did approve the consent item, which recognizes the resolution for Surrey County being Cleanup Month. But one of the reasons why I wanted to bring it more for coming to the boards in the public attention, because we do know that in the month of April, our citizens do a lot of cleanup. And obviously, we do have activities in place to be able to have our citizens to dispose of waste as they are doing the right thing, which is sprucing up Surrey County. We do want Surrey County to be a clean county. And there are activities that, please go on our website. I believe there is a special notice that has been posted on our website that talks about the various cleanup times and the locations. So please, citizens, we're asking that you pay attention to these times and do what's necessary to get your areas spruced up in Surrey County. The dates are April ninth and April the twenty-third. There's also opportunities for vehicle donation. This information has been provided by Ms. Chapman. There's Wastless Wind Days that's included on here, where you can give with a nonprofit to be able to dispose of certain things. And also, there's opportunities to get rid of clothing and other items during Earth Day 2022. So this is a very important initiative for Surrey County. Employees will be participating in a cleanup day on April thirtieth. So we are doing our part and going along the road sides, as we have done traditionally, and make sure that we're doing our part to keep Surrey County clean. Again, I had mentioned in a previous meeting that our solid waste attendants are doing a great job. And obviously, board members and citizens, they do get hit sometimes with individuals who want to come and dump commercial waste. And we do know that is not accepted at our landfill, so I just want to reiterate that. We do have signs that we are going to be posting at all of the sites. Again, just making sure that all citizens and businesses know that it is not for commercial waste acceptance. Okay, the next item on the administrators' report is an update on the mobile radio communication system. I mentioned during our work session with the board that the county did receive two proposals. And at this particular time, we had issued the notice of intent with Motorola for the upgrade of the county's long-awaited radio communication system to benefit our public safety department here in Surrey County. And there is no specific action item on tonight. We do want to, well, there is one action item. The request is to permit me at this particular time just to start the negotiation process with Motorola. And at a subsequent meeting, we're going to be asking Motorola to come before the board and to explain to the board and to the citizens their proposed project for Surrey County. So this is just an ask for the administrator to be able to just start the negotiation process and consult with the county attorney to begin the negotiation process with Motorola. And we're not asking for any approval of any contract at this point. All of that has to be worked out. But at this particular time, we just want to just get a consensus that we are ready to start the negotiation process, again, with Motorola, as the vendor of choice.
And board members, you've heard the request coming from our administrator that we need to, she needs to start negotiating a contract with Motorola. So could I have a motion to that effect? If everybody's in agreement that that's something we do need and have to do. Motion to start the negotiation with Motorola.
Madam Chair, move that we would authorize county administrator to begin negotiations with Motorola for our communication system here in the county.
Thank you. The move in second. All of those in favor, let it be known by the sound of aye. Aye. Are there any nays? Here are none. Ms. Rollins?
Thank you so much. Thank you so very much. I know we're going to have some happy people to ready to get that process started. The next item we have is a proclamation for Animal Control Officers Appreciation Week. And Sheriff Turner is here. Sheriff Turner, we received the proclamation for for Animal Control Week. The month of April, the National Association of County does designate a week in the month of April as County Government Week. So there's a lot of things that are happening all over, and we do have several things that the board has already approved, recognizing the works of tourism and economic development. And we certainly want to applaud those employees who are part of those particular proclamations. This one, again, is for the National Animal Care and Control Association, and there's a proclamation there. I won't read it in its entirety, but I will ask the board to recognize Animal Control Officers Appreciation Week for the week of April tenth to, April tenth through April sixteen, two thousand and twenty-two, as Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week, where the county expresses its sincere thanks and recognizes animal control officers for their dedication and service they perform to the residents living in our community, and fulfilling the commitment of their duties to the highest and most proficient level of customer service. So Sheriff Turner, did you have any comments? Thank you so very much. So board members, we're asking to approve the proclamation recognizing Officer Appreciation Week, April tenth through sixteen. recognizing Officer Appreciation Week, April 10th through 16th.
Madam Chair, so moved on the Animal Control Observation Week proclamation.
Second.
Second.
Been moved in second that we would approve the Animal Control Office Appreciation Week proclamation. All those in favor, let it be known by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Nays?
Okay.
Here and none? Motion carried, that's alright.
Thank you so very much, Little. I'm sorry, I'm moving on. Okay, we have proclamation for Telecommunications Week, also April 10th through 2016, 2022. And you do have a proclamation for your consideration. And we do have here tonight, Ms. Kelly Coons. If you want to raise your hand or stand, Ms. Kelly, who is our emergency communications manager. And Ms. Kelly, and I know that Sheriff, if you want to concur with me by your head nod, that Ms. Kelly Coons is doing a fantastic job for Surry County as being the manager of our emergency communications operations. And you do have a proclamation for your consideration on this evening. We do know that this particular job as well is a very stressful job in terms of the demands that this particular department has. They are the first responders to the various calls that they receive. You do have the proclamation in front of you. Due to the timing, I would not read it in its entirety. But again, it recognizes and commends the Surry County Emergency Communications Center and the communication officers for the many dedicated and long hours of selfless duty performed in service to this community and fulfilling the Emergency Communications Center's mission that states the Emergency Communications Center is the critical component to initiate a prompt, efficient, courteous, and professional response to protect and preserve life, property, and safety, thus providing the highest and most efficient level of customer service possible to those they serve. So, we want to commend Ms. Kelly and her staff again for an outstanding job. It's always refreshing to hear her reports and how she's making strides in that particular department to make sure that we, again, retain those employees that can be a high turnover because of the stress of the job. So, thank you, Ms. Kelly. And for board members, it's just a motion, if you don't mind, to recognize April 10th through 16th as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week.
Board, you've heard the request. Have a motion?
Madam Chair, so moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. All in favor, let it be known by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Nay? Here and none? Ayes have it, and thank you.
Okay.
For your service.
Yes, board members, last housekeeping item. I just want you to remember the conversation we just had with the schools regarding the money that's involved if the board desires to do anything with the teacher's step. But there is another item for your attention this evening, and you do have it in your agenda material. And that is the Notice of the Public Hearing on Proposed Tax Increase. Board members, again, as you all know, this is budget time. And that this year, we did go through a reassessment in which we do it every six years. And because of that, the reassessment, of course, does not conclude technically to the end of March, in which the county receives just some estimates as to what the results of the reassessment are going to be. So, we received information kind of late. So, we always had a little crux in terms of when we get certain notices to the paper. And the paper, again, has changed their deadline. So, we are trying to balance the, have a balancing act between board meetings and when we get our notices out to the paper. But you do have before you the notice that we would be getting published in the paper. And basically, it states the proposed tax increase. The board of supervisors proposed to increase real property tax levels for fiscal year beginning July 1, '22 through June 30 of 2023 by seven cents over the equalized rate of 70 cents. So, based on the reassessment, in order to generate the same amount of revenue, based on the reassessment, the lowered rate would be 70 cents, okay? Instead of 77 cents. That equates to about a 14.4% increase. So, the total assessed values of real property, excluding additional assessments due to new construction or improvements, did exceed last year's assessed value of real property by about 14.4%. As you're aware, we do need to advertise this for 30 days before the board of supervisors can have a public hearing. The advertised rate is going to be at 77 cents. And that is just to give staff and the board opportunity to, again, to still dev into the budget process and to make a determination as to what the rate that the board of supervisors would like to adopt. It doesn't mean that you're required to adopt the 77 cents. It's just that we are putting the current rate in the tax notice so that we can meet the requirements of our notice. So, at this particular time, there is no action, but it's just wanted to be able to share with the board and the public of the lowered tax rate and the fact that we will be advertising this. And 30 days in which we'll be having the public hearing on this, I believe, would be May 12th. Okay, it's the date for the public hearing. And with that stated, budget time, I want to give the board a update on the next dates in which we will be talking about the budget. It's certainly up to the board as to whether or not you want to have a work session on next Thursday. We can talk about it at the end. But in terms of the timeframe, the April 21st date is the date in which I expect to present to you, board members, the county administrator's recommended budget for 2022, 2023. And then on, I have my dates here. And we're going to publish this also on our website so that the citizens can know the dates in which we are planning to do all of this. And on, again, May 12th, the public hearing on the tax rate increase, and also the public hearing on the proposed budget on the 12th. And then following on the 19th, then hopefully, the board will be ready to consider action on the proposed budget and to set the tax rates for the ensuing fiscal year. So, there is a work session that you can certainly have on the 21st. And certainly, if the board desires, you can have another work session at another time. But that would be up to the board.
Alright.
Okay, and I want to say, Ms. Chairman and members of the board, I believe that concludes. No, I'm sorry, just one other thing. I do apologize, but it's a lot that's going on. There is a post that we're having the senior citizens free meal on April the 10th. From what I understand, Mr. Calhoun, that you volunteered to assist with that?
I did.
Okay, on April 10th. And that is an opportunity for citizens 65 years and old who reside in Surry County to receive a free meal. This is sponsored by our Department of Social Services. And if I want to understand, when they did this a couple of Sundays ago, it was a great turnout, and all the citizens who received that really enjoyed that. So, please come out. And if you meet those qualifications, to get your free meal on Sunday, April the 10th, the time is at 1 o'clock at the pavilion. And recycling, I know there had been some discussion regarding the removal of the recycling bins at our solid waste sites. There's information that was placed on our website to let the citizens know exactly what the county was faced with, like other jurisdictions, as pertains to recycling, which is certainly no longer viable for communities. We are finding out more and more that recyclable materials are not being recycled. They are ending up in our landfill. Surry County was caught off guard when we went to our landfill to try to dispose of recyclables. And they told us that they, that they no longer accepted our recyclables. So, in our efforts to try to find another place to take it to, we were turned away as if they did not accept it or that was a very huge fee that they were going to charge us. And based on our staffing here, that it's just not feasible for us to travel to Chesapeake or Virginia Beach to, you know, try to dispose of recycled materials. So, I just wanted to share that information with the board and with the public. So, with that stated, board members, that does conclude my report for tonight. And I know it was lengthy, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. Board members, are there any questions about staff's notes for tonight? And we do have a meeting, a work session on the 14th. If we...
If the board desires to continue them. If the board desires, you would need to continue your meeting to the 14th for a work session.
Alright, so, we will, okay. Entertain that at the end of our meeting tonight. At this time, we will open the floor for public comments. And you come forth, please. This is a time where you can share with us your comments. There will be no dialogue, but you have three minutes. Let us know your name, where you're, what district.
Mike Eggersen, Denderon, Blackwater District. Holloway is reducing some of their taxes. I keep hearing that we're hiring new employees, but I don't hear anything about increasing efficiency. Efficiency. Why isn't there a littering law in Surry County? When you drive down 31 in 617, it looks like you're in the Waverly landfill. Beer cans, McDonald's, paper. I mean, you're talking about a cleanup month. How about we clean up the ditches? You know, it doesn't reflect well on Surry County, driving down the highway. And you're talking about cleanup. How about you start with Manchera Road in Denderon dump sites? You both know what I'm talking about, because I sent you pictures of what it looks like. It's disgraceful, absolutely disgraceful. We keep increasing the budget, and the services drop to the taxpayers in the county. We only have about 2,500 taxpayers out of 6,000 people. And you keep raising taxes, raising taxes, but the services don't increase. Thank you.
Next. Any other public comments? Floor is open.
Sorry, I'm trying to find it now. Of course, I've lost it.
That's okay. Understand technology.
My name is Journey Ketchum. I represent the Denderon District. Just had a concern about the change in agenda earlier this evening. So, I wanted to point out that the bylaws of the board of supervisors. Sorry, again. Just wanted to read it. I'm sure you are well aware of it.
Yes, ma'am. We have a copy right here. So, let me know if you need it.
Okay. Matters may be placed on the board agenda upon the request of any member of the board to the county administrator or by the county administrator upon approval by the chair. The agenda and accompanying information shall be distributed to each member at least five days prior to the meeting. The county administrator may add or delete items from the agenda at any time prior to the meeting upon approval by the chair. So, two issues I have, and maybe you can help me with them. Based on the meeting tonight, we heard that there was an email sent on the 5th of April that was within the five-day requirement of items on the agenda and the packet to be sent to you. So, I don't believe that you have fulfilled the five-day requirement. And number two, I didn't hear anything tonight where the board chair had approved the changes to the agenda. Thank you.
Other public comments? Thank you. We will close public comments at this time, seeing no one else approaching. Board members' comments? Mr. Elliott?
No comments. Chairperson Little, Chairwoman Little.
Mr. Drury?
I got just a few.
Okay.
And Ms. Rollins, I think you, I think I saw an email as I was leaving the house this evening about the old building at the courthouse down here.
Yes.
Yes, I just had notes down here, just to let you all know. Yes, I've been receiving complaints about that. And in fact, I thought I'd emailed you all about that about a month or two ago. But anyway, went by it at the day and kind of, kind of sad. The canvas has been on it so long that it's actually rotted. And there's no, and there was rain this evening, was going to go right straight into that old building. And they talked to some maintenance people on that, I guess about a month ago. And I know that they had brought it up to the supervisor, gosh, a year ago. So, if staff can't get to it, and I'm not being mean or pointed when I say this, I will go to Lowe's and buy a canvas and put it over the top of it. I see Mr. Harrison shaking his head. Not sure why.
Yes, sir, because it requires a contractor that has the ability to work on historical structures. The structure is under the auspices of the Historical Board for the state. So, we have to secure contractors who are able to work on historical structures to repair the roof.
Mr. Harrison, I understand that. And you are talking to a gentleman that's got a doctorate in law? I don't think that I will get in trouble by putting a tarp over it. So, just leave it to the professionals, please. I understand the permanent solution has to go through all that. But it doesn't mean, I don't think that architectural and historical people would like the building sitting there for over, I don't know, a year or two with nothing covering it, and it's rotting. So, again, my comment is, please, please look after that building and get some professional advice on that, because I do not think it precludes putting a tarp over the top of it. And thank you. County dumpsters, yes, I'm getting complaints from the Denderon. And I know that this has been a budget item. And I know, Ms. Rollins, you all have looked into that. Before, the Denderon District residents are not real pleased with...
Mr. Drury, go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Y'all got something?
No, go ahead, Mr. Drury, go ahead.
Because it is important. They go, I haven't been to the other sites, but they consistently call me about that the Denderon District site is below standards of what the other sites are. In fact, I have the county line running through my farm so I can use Wakefield, which I do. But just as we're going through the budget season, if we could be looking, looking at that, it would be, would be wonderful. One other item, and I don't know whether staff, I know Mr. Bryan, I think, has gone. This week, in going to the Surry website, when I type in Surry County, Virginia, just not a complaint, it's just reality. It goes to the tourism site. And you've really got to work, do a workaround to get to the county site, at least. I had to. And we're just concerned about that with citizens not being able to see the agenda for this, this evening. The other thing, too, and just let staff and citizens know, my county email has been difficult and never has really worked real well. And I've talked to Mr. Bryan about it. We've deleted it and reinstalled it. So, just a message there. If something urgent, use my personal email account, which is Michael underscore Drury at yahoo dot com if I really, really need to see something. I get home in the evenings and I'm tired, and I sit down and hit the Surry icon, and it churns. And so, I get tired and turn it off. So, if it's something urgent, please use my personal email, and that's to citizens as well. The other, the other thing, and we had a citizen comment about this, the agenda and the bylaws, that bylaws, and Ms. Powell, maybe you can look into this too, but the bylaws are for non-public hearing items. The Virginia Code kind of controls public hearings. And zoning matters are a different, different story. And it has it in there that once something, we're supposed to, we're supposed to recommend items to the Planning Commission, the board is. And once it hits the Planning Commission, they have 90 days, I think, and maybe it's 100 days, 100 days, I believe, to, to move on that item, to make a recommendation or not. Once it comes here to the board of supervisors, we have one year. It's the board that, that controls that agenda. It's not staff, it's not the applicant. The applicant can ask for a deferral, but we, as the board, it's our responsibility to do that. And in other localities, you will see that done. The majority of the time, the board does what the applicant wants and defers it or continues it. But I have seen sometimes, boards go, no, it's matured enough. We're ready to make a decision tonight. It's a board decision. And as elected official, it's been very frustrating for me to be on this board, be elected, have citizens come to me, expect me to, to help them make change, and then just feel powerless, just powerless. And please, please rely on us, you know, here on the board to, to help the citizens and help the staff. And again, we've got a consultant sitting over there. Ms. Powell also has a doctorate in law. And she can help us go through this and, and get things and do things correctly. Just trying to improve the professionalism of the county here. And it's frustrating at times. And thank you. And thank you.
Mr. Howell? Or Mr. Duff?
Good afternoon. I am so pleased and delighted to see everyone here tonight, saw the new people, the work that's going on in the county. I'm grateful to hear the public comments that have been brought forward and the, into the share and what's going on and what's happening in Surrey County. We may not get everything right as a board, but it's not because we're trying to do anything wrong as a board or as individuals. And so it is, it is imperative that, you know, if we make a mistake, we will hold up to that mistake and try to do our best and put our best foot forth in the next round to do better. With that being said, I will, I'm going to still say that this board up here and the members of the administration of this county are always working towards doing its very best by its citizens, for the citizens and for this county. And I am proud to be a part of this board. I am proud to be a part of this body. And hopefully that as time goes on and as things continue to progress, you will see that we are truly committed to public service. With that being said, I do want to read a statement on this evening. And that statement is addressed to the Honorable Chair, Judy S. Litter, to the county administrators and members of the Board of Supervisors. Please indulge me. Public service is a calling and it's the advocacy around issues that support and protect those we serve. I've often stated, it's truly a pleasure to serve the people of Surrey County. Without the citizens, county government could not be successful. For there is nothing more precious than brightening tomorrow by improving the lives of people today. I took that maxim to heart at the start of this journey, even now and will into the future. It has therefore been gratifying and an honor to serve, always fiercely working toward that goal. As a public servant, I know that achieving, achieving a promising future for Surrey County can only be obtained through productive community relations, listening to the voices of citizens and representing conscientiously, equitably and with integrity. I am humbled by the vote of confidence and support that the citizens of the Carsley District gave me to serve and to represent them. As John F. Kennedy once remarked, leadership and learning are indispensable to each other. I have learned from my constituents and others, from community, business and religious leaders, which has enabled me to be a better person, a better citizen and a better leader. As mentioned in Ecclesiastes, to everything there is a season and a time to every purpose under the heaven. This evening, it is with heartfelt emotion that the season has come for me to resign my position as Vice Chair and Carsley District Representative of the Surrey County Board of Supervisors, effective at the conclusion of this meeting. Please know that this decision comes beyond my control and should not in any way reflect a diminished desire to serve. In fact, it has always been my intention to continue to serve. However, in the best interest of all parties, I must share with you this difficult and unfortunate decision to step down from this seat. I am tremendously proud of the meaningful work this board, county administrators and staff do each day on the behalf of citizens. This is evident by targeted investments for capital and business development, infrastructure planning and public support. As a lifelong resident of Surrey County, I am pleased of the county's efforts to improve the quality of life for its residents, to see a renewed focus on tourism and greater emphasis on attracting people of all ages, especially young professionals and growing families. I am content to reflect, to remember and to smile to have been part of these and other endeavors. While there comes a time when the baton is passed in this marathon journey that we call public service, it has truly been an unforgettable experience to be one of a five-member board of such a human and professionalism. I wish my fellow board members the absolute best as they continue to put the needs of their citizens first and the future decisions they must make. Though I regret that I find myself at this crossroad, I am committed to finding other ways to give back to this community that has given me so much in this season of my life. I trust that the person that should succeed me will carry such care and passion to serve the Carsley District, the citizens of Surrey County and to ultimately make Surrey County a better place to live, work and play for current and future generations. Regretfully submitted, Ronald M. Howell, Jr., Vice Chair and Carsley Board District Representative. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. Although we are sad, we appreciate your kindness, we appreciate your service and we appreciate that. We don't welcome what you just read because we don't want to lose you, but we understand and I think you did quite a wonderful job in sharing your thoughts with this board. And I applaud your service to Surrey County all the time because even before you got on the board, you were a servant in Surrey County. And so we sadly say that we hate to see you leave this board.
Not a problem. Thank you.
You're welcome. Other board members?
Mr. Howell, yeah, I do have one question before we entertain your resignation. Is it possible, I don't know if you can indulge us or not, but is it possible that this resignation is in line with your promotion or appointment and to the federal government with the Biden administration? Is that, if, if that is so, I would like to congratulate you on that before we entertain your resignation.
At this time, what I will say is that my service to the Board of Supervisors, to any other committee or board and commission of this county was vetted in the process of me being appointed by President Joseph Biden. And it is mutually exclusive from my ability to serve because my ability to serve was vetted and approved. That's what I will say at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Howell.
Yeah, Mr. Howell, I, I appreciate your candor and appreciate your service. Met you for pretty much the first time. I'd heard your name a couple of years ago and at Martin Luther King Gathering. And you, you had quite a speech that day and it was very impressive. And I think I told you, I hoped you would come back and help. And I know you'll be here and I know you're in Richmond to help and will always have it hard. So again, it's been a pleasure to be with you here and, and I'm wishing you the, the best. It's, it's hard as you hear me trying to push and pull and everything else, but on the board as well. But, but really appreciate the time.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Howell, thank you for your service on a short-term notice when you took over the position. And I appreciate all your work and ethics and, and helping this county grow. And I wish you the best in your new endeavors and, and may the wind always be in your sails as you go forward.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, board members, staff.
Yes, I do. To Mr. Howell, I just want to say thank you again for your support of this administration. We do appreciate your valuable insight and your input on some of the decisions that have really allowed us to move forward as a county and really do some great things to benefit the entire Surrey County, not just any one district, but all the districts. So thank you again for your, for your dedication and your support of this administration. You have been a breath of fresh air. And again, we just want to thank you so much for all your support and we're going to certainly miss you on the board, but we know that you have great things to do. And congratulations again. This is a very exciting time. Dr. Howell, as I can say, and also for your appointment to the Biden administration, a Surrey County native, a Surrey County grown, a product of Surrey, Surrey County Public School System has this position. So you are to be commended and congratulated for all that you have done and will continue to do. I look for higher things from you. So again, congratulations.
Mr. Harrison, did you have any comments? Mr. Danielle? And I'm asking you, I know you all have worked personally with each other, so do you have any comments?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair. I appreciate the, the opportunity to do that. I will make my comments brief. It has, I just, I agree with the rest of the board's comments. It's been, and Ms. Rollins' comments, it's been a pleasure working with you, although short. It's been great. And so I do also wish you all the best in the future. Now that that has been mentioned, I, there now will be going forward after tonight a vacancy. So, you know, as a lawyer, I have to give the legalities of it. And so now that there's a vacancy, the board will, I would ask that the board give me authority petition to Circuit Court to schedule a special election for this vacancy. I believe that petition has to be filed within fifteen days of the vacancy. And I believe there's a general election in November. But I, I will need to petition the Circuit Court within fifteen days now that there's a vacancy. And then the board would need to appoint someone within forty-five days. I believe that's the process. But happy to answer your questions you may have. I wanted to throw that out there. Again, Mr. Howell, it's been great working with you and I wish you the best.
Thank you so much. Board, you've heard the comments from our attorney that we need to petition have her, okay, to, when we do approve his resignation, to have a special election for Carsley District come the next election period. And we have to do that within forty-five days. But at this time, we will entertain a motion to accept Mr. Howell's resignation from the board.
Madam Chair, regretfully, we will accept Mr. Howell's resignation and wish him God's speed in his future endeavors. And we do thank him for the dedicated service he's given to Surrey County thus far. And we know that any way that he can help us in the future, he will be right there to do so.
Thank you. We'll have a second.
I'll, I'll second that with the same kind words from Reverend Elliott.
Board members, you've heard the motion. Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, regrettably, motion carried and you go with our blessings, Mr. Howell. Are there any other? Oh, I don't, did we finish our board comments? No. This is kind of Floyd me, so.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, could we, I would just like to get some clarity from, from legal as to what do we do as a board now to fill this seat? Do we, I know we have a, 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 Senate General Election is in November. What do we do before that time?
Before that time, Mr. Elliott, I would need to petition the court, the Circuit Court, within fifteen days of Mr. Howell's vacancy. So I'm assuming the clock starts tomorrow since his resignation will be effective at the end of this board meeting. And that petition would ask the court to schedule a special election. In the meantime, the board can appoint a member to fill the seat for the Carsley District, but that would, that appointment would need to be made within forty-five days. And so how the board decides to appoint that member is up to the board. The board could do what they did last time, which is to accept applications and interview and select someone. Or if the board wants to talk about amongst themselves and come up with a name to appoint someone, the board can do that too. But the board does have forty-five days to make that appointment.
Thank you. Do we have, we have, have we agreed to have the work session next week, Board? Because I think this is something we definitely take up now with all the different issues we have. We need to be at capacity, I do believe. Is this, have we approved the fourteenth work session?
I don't think we have. I think that we would do that at the end.
Yes, yes, Chair. Yes, Madam Chair.
I mean, when we close this meeting, we would convene again on the fourteenth. No, the fourteenth.
That's why I said we haven't approved or decided when we're going to come back together.
I think we're being asked for the fourteenth.
Yes.
But then I heard on the twenty-first, so are you thinking of two dates?
Well, the, the twenty-first is the date I'm presenting the budget, but it's certainly up to the board to have a work session on the fourteenth. It could be budget and other matters. So if the board wants to get the end of the meeting adjourned to the fourteenth, it sounds like the board has some business it would like to discuss on the fourteenth.
Madam Chair, if I just may make a recommendation, and we don't have to, because my time is limited too, I certainly can come back on the fourteenth if needed. But we've done this before. I think what Ms. Powell is asking just for direction of, in other words, Ms. Powell, tell me right or wrong. But I think you can ask the board, I mean, the judge for a special election or to hold that special election at the next general election. Last time we did it at the general election, in other words, what we did is she petitioned the court, set it for the general election, and then we advertised real quick for interviews. And I'm okay with that process again. I don't know that I need a whole lot more discussion about it, but if other board members, you know, want some other different process, that's fine. And when we, you know, last time this vacancy, I think we have the template in place. And I'm okay with that, unless other board members are not.
Okay, got you. Okay.
Board members, you've heard Mr. Drury's request is that, that we would move forward to advertise that the position is vacant and that advertise for those who are interested to fill the position.
I think we could advertise, and my apologies for breaking in, to just start it rolling. In other words, we could address it on the twenty-first, if you understand me, but go ahead.
My, my, my question was if we decide, I know the fourteenth was on the floor of whether we were going to have a work session. If we were going to have a work session, then what Mr. Drury said, I'm not, not opposing what Mr. Drury is saying, but that would give us an opportunity to discuss it even at the work session, the more.
Yes. And also I want to add, even though whatever you all decide, but we do need to have a work session on the fourteen. Mr. Harrison just reminded me, we have the application that we're doing for the next round of funding for McKeaton's office. So that is a quick turnaround, if you recall. So between that and some budget discussion, we do want to have a work session on the fourteenth.
Let me rephrase what I said, then. You, y'all mind if we start the process and what we, like we did last time, and then we can discuss it more on the fourteenth?
Exactly. That's what I was going to say.
Got you. I thought that's what you were saying, but just wanted to clarify.
Do we need a motion on that or we all concur that we will have more discussion on the fourteenth?
With Ms. Powell going forth in the meantime and county administration going forth with advertising it.
Oh, you.
We need a motion for that.
Oh, my motion is going to be for Ms. Powell to petition the court to have a special election with the general election in November. In the meantime, for county administration to go ahead and put on the website, how we did it last time to collect resumes.
Second motion.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, are there any questions first about that motion? Okay. So all those in favor, I think we had a second, right?
We did.
Yeah, Mr. Elliott. By the vote of aye.
Aye.
Nays, hearing none, ayes have it. Nays, hearing none, ayes have it, so Ms. Danielle, if you, Ms. Powell, will you move forward with the petition?
Yes, Madam Chair, I think.
And did we ever carry the motion for the resignation? Did we ever carry the motion for the, accepting the resignation? I know that Mr. Drury, you seconded, we carried it. Okay, gotcha.
Oh, thank you. So much.
I know.
Well. Oh, where are we now?
Madam Chair, I, I think we are at the end of the meeting, there are just, there is just one FY item, and that is for the Regional Library March 2022 report. And before we get to adjournment, Madam Chair, may I have the floor for just one second, please, or just a couple of minutes?
If there are no objections from the board members, you may. Any objections, Ms. Rollins, to have a few?
No objection.
Okay, I'm not hearing any.
Well, thank you so very much, and typically, you know, I, I thought about, you know, this, and one of the things that, you know, we typically do as administration, I want to address this to the board, so you all can be aware, and also that the public can be aware, because one of the things that I know that this administration does is try to pride itself on professionalism and providing the best customer service to all the residents in Surrey. And I know that sometimes when we hear it, and I think, Mr. Howell, you stated that we don't get it right one hundred percent of the time, but I can tell you, we certainly try ninety-nine point nine percent of the time. So with that stated, I know that we have heard some comments tonight regarding whether or not the chair gave approval for things to come off the agenda, and the young lady who read the bylaws, when I said that I had it right in front of me, is because, again, it indicated in the bylaws that Mr. Mrs. Madam Chair did give administration the authorization to make the change to agenda. So I just wanted to get that out so that, you know, the public and the board can know that administration works with the chair to make changes to the agenda, all bit of what has been stated regarding the preferred method in which it, in which it had been done. And also in terms of, again, in terms of the, the building in the courthouse, and I'm glad that Mr. Drury, you was able to get that email that was sent to you, and I know that Mr. Brown does pride himself on trying to make sure that all the board members that your email is accessible, so I'm glad that you was able to get that one. So I just wanted to go ahead and share that pertaining to that tarp, because I just want the public to know that on, back in November, we listed that particular project on the county's CIP project list for recognizing that we needed to do something with it. And on December, we contacted a construction company to provide us a quote on repairing of the roof. At that particular time, we had received some information that it was a historical building and that we need to proceed further and to really be very meticulous as how we took care of that building going forward. We did receive a notice from the town of Surrey that we were in violation of that facility, and the town at that time did not know that we were, that it was already on the county's radar. So once we got that notice, we had already started the process, but back in March, early part of March, the project manager contacted the town to let them know that we was actually in the process of doing something with that building, because, again, it's an assore, and everybody knows that this administration, that we really tried to take care of those things that are assore, so we knew that that was a problem. And then back in the first part of, the middle of March, we did contact the Department of Virginia Historical Resources, and we received information as what could be done with that building, since we learned that it was of historic nature and that we really had to be cautious as to what to do with that building. And as of today, we are waiting on a response back from the Virginia Historical Resources Department so that we would have the right scope of work, so we know what we need to do with that building. We were engaged at Buildings and Grounds Committee, Mr. Calhoun, so, and you will be very familiar with what we need to do for that process. So I just wanted to share that information with the board and with the public. And that is, that's it, Mrs. Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. So at this time, we've covered all business of this board for this evening. We will ask for a motion to adjourn until May the, I mean, April the fourteenth at six o'clock in this room.
Mr. Howell, your resignation goes into effect at, at twelve tonight?
Yes, I understand. It, it goes into effect at the conclusion of this meeting.
The conclusion of this meeting.
But conclusion.
I would ask, no, I would ask that you would make the motion.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, Mr. Elliott, and so that, Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn this meeting until this board can reconvene again on April fourteenth for a board workshop, a special meeting to discuss matters that have been talked about on this evening.
Thank you.
Second, the motion.
They moved in second. All in favor, let it be known by a sign of aye. Aye. Nays?
Madam Chair, can we do that by a round of applause for Mr. Howell?
Sure. (applause).